Start out with the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion? Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have the report of board members. Mr. Newton. Mr. Moore, you did say no, right? Mr. Newton?
Good evening. First, I want to start out by saying I went to Raytown and had a phenomenal time with Ms. Toni Davis and the students and the teachers up there. I also went with Dr. Moore and the Culture Competency Group and several wonderful group of people. Ms. Marie Tracy and a bunch of phenomenal people. Heard a lot of different things, got a lot of great ideas. I also heard from a phenomenal young lady, Ms. Erin Seals, a senior at Raytown High School. She did a phenomenal job presenting her books and things like that. I was blown away by the whole thing in the Culture Competency Group. What I learned, it was a dynamic, dynamic day for me, so I appreciate you guys having me out. I went to Fleet Ridge Elementary School after that to present some young people, some donuts from Doughboys that had passed to the next level. And I had a great time with them and Ms. Burks over there. It was a great day with fifth graders over there after they had did like a, they had seen a bubble. They had had a bubble demonstration over there for passing to the next level. I also got to be with the great Dr. Griner and the group with the Ford NGL group. And the next thing that we're trying to do with those guys as well. I was also a part of Ms. Dickerson with the Senior Day at Raytown. And it was phenomenal to see all the young people that got a chance to participate in that. And I also want to say thank you guys. I would be like remiss not to thank everyone who participated, giving us all the great gifts for the Board Month and recognizing us, so I want to say thank you guys for all of that, so thank you very much.
Johnson Berry?
So I had the pleasure a few weeks ago to read to some elementary students at Fleet Ridge. And then I got to tag team with President Burton and he was once again, for the second year in a row, Gerald the giraffe that couldn't dance. And so he is so funny. And then I had the pleasure of doing the MSBA virtual meeting about some of the legislative updates. I had the privilege just to do some informal check-ins with some of our high school students. And then I was able to join a think tank of other board members just across Missouri just to talk about some of the challenges going on right now in education. And just for my own personal investment, I just finished a course called Teaching Through a Culturally Diverse Lens.
Some of the things that I participated in, I participated in the Missouri School Board Association's Spring Virtual Meeting with Dr. Stephanie Cruvaz. And she spoke on the importance of engaging families in education, which benefits everyone. Also, I went to the staff recognition on March 14th. Congratulations to all of our staff. You're very valuable to all of us and in particular, you're invaluable to me. And lastly, on Easter Sunday, I got to host a family and community Easter egg hunt on my property without incident. Those are some things I participated in.
I just want to take this time to thank the school district, the teachers and the students who donated canned goods and food items to Reap. We got an opportunity to receive those as well as the Shremmer Heartland Community Foundation, where we had a couple of Raytown High School and Raytown South High School students stand outside of Hy-Vee a couple of weeks ago and also collect donations for Reap for our families here within the Raytown School District. So just want to say thank you on behalf of our families and our individuals that we serve.
So Ms. Johnson Berry got to tell about me doing the dance at Blue Ridge Elementary. I think that's going to be an annual event, so hopefully it doesn't traumatize the kids too much. I've been visiting schools with Dr. Martin Knox. It's kind of a secret schedule. And so I plan to, before the school year is out, have stepped foot in every building before the school year is out. So if I haven't been to yours, I will be, I'll be there. I've been to Fleet Ridge where they had Fun Friday, playing music during lunch. I danced there too. So I'm on a world tour, I guess. And then we went to, I do more than dance though. I learned some things, about some good things and some of the struggles that's going on in the schools. And really at Northfleet, I was blown away with their connections. And I really appreciate what's going on there. Been to Little Blue Elementary. And so I feel that you guys are really, really doing a great job in these schools. And I just want to be able to see, you know, just check the temperature and see what, oh yeah. I went to Raytown Middle. I'll be back. I'm coming tomorrow to see my guy. So, yeah, she looked at me funny. But I'll be, that's been, it's been really good to get out in the schools. I think I was challenged by some of our high school students in our last meeting. I took it personal. So I, of course, ain't going to be able to do that every day and be there as much as students and teachers has to. But I think it's very, very wise for us as board members to really see what it's like there out on the ground. And so I really appreciate the board members and all the activities that they're doing and the participation that they have. We have a really active board and I really appreciate that. And so I thank you guys and I thank you guys for having us to serve you. That's it for the report of board members. Next we have the reporter superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Good evening, Mr. Burton, Board Chair, Board Vice Chairman, Mr. Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the amazing Raytown Quality Schools community. At this time, I'd just like to recap a couple of days and events that we've celebrated thus far, beginning this month with a recognition of our assistant principals and our administrative interns. I'm not sure if many of you have taken the opportunity to just thank them for the work that they do. We have principals in the buildings and we have assistant principals and administrative interns. And they're usually the backbones of the building, helping us move the needle for our children. They are supports for our teachers, our teachers are support for our children, but collectively, we can do so much for our children. So I just want to publicly thank our assistant principals and administrative interns for the work that they do each and every day and to say that you are truly appreciated. Sometimes some of the days roll around and I almost forget, but I did not forget that there was paraprofessional day or instructional assistant day, as we call them. And when you talk about the backbone of our school district, those individuals who serve in roles as paraprofessionals or instructional assistants are really support staff. They are there to support teachers, students, and the operations of our schools. And without them, we wouldn't be able to be successful. So thank you to our par educators or our instructional assistants, whichever title you use. They're all the same and the work that they do is beneficial to our children. I also want to take a moment to thank our librarian media assistants or librarians, as many of us continue to call them, because we've also celebrated National Librarian Day. So if you have not stopped past your library, please make sure you do so. Because again, when you talk about a quiet storm, most of our library media specialists are in the background helping with our reading initiatives as it pertains to literacy. But they do so much more when it comes to technology and other needs within our school district and within our school. So I'd like to thank them. I want to give a special shout out to a group of individuals. You know, oftentimes we see the good, the bad, the ugly and all those other things that happen in between in our schools. But there's nothing like an incident that brings a school close together. And the other day, I had the fortunate pleasure of being at Robinson Elementary. It was unfortunate what led us there, but it was fortunate to see our teachers, our students and our administrators in action. Every day, we practice the ways in which we can safeguard the learning environment, but it's nothing like being in the moment. So for all of our Robinson Elementary School staff, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking care of our children. Thank you for taking care of one another. And thank you for being your very best, especially when things don't seem to be your very best. It was very, very enlightening to see and I just want to say thank you. I received a couple of letters saying thank you for being there to me, but it was a pleasure for me to be there, to see you all in action. So I just wanted to send out a very strong thank you to Jamie Washington for her leadership during this time, as well as to the executive staff for being present and on site for support. And finally, we just came back from spring break. And reality did not hit me until the other day when I met with my superintendent ambassadors and half of them weren't there. I realized that they, you hold your head Riley. I realized at that moment that we were coming closer to the end of the school year. And so while we are at that point, this is our time to really buckle down so we can end strong, make sure we are focusing on our academics so that we can conclude the year strong, but also making sure we are kind to one another as we are coming to the end of the school year. Again, as I say all the time, we need to offer one another sometimes a little bit of grace because we're all human and none of us are perfect. But let's continue to make sure we're working to make Raytown hashtag a place to be proud as we are. So we are Raytown, ray of hope. This concludes that portion of the superintendent's report with the exception of our student report that will be presented.
Good afternoon, Board, Mr. President, Superintendent Knox. My name is Carrie Shelley. I am Vice President of Raytown South Student Council. And I'm here to report on two of our topics and Riley will do the other half. But we held our third annual art fair in the last three years on, it was April 5th, I think. And we, there was over 20 vendors of students that brought arts, pieces, sculptures, paintings, anything along those lines to sell to the community. Anybody was invited and it was held during parent teacher conferences. So anybody in the building at the time was able to come down and view our students' artwork. And it was such a success. There was many people selling their art, there was people getting promotions from people in the community. And the students at our school really seemed to enjoy it. And then Mr. Cardinal, which we are in the ropes of planning right now, is April 17th. Anybody is invited. It is kind of similar to what Raytown does with Mr. Raytown, which we have done in the past, Mr. Cardinal before, but we are bringing it back up again. And there's categories such as formal wear, talent, like our participants will get up and do like a funny little talent. There's people doing roller skating, singing, anything along those lines. It's really fun. And then there's a Q and A portion. And the whole point is that it's a fundraiser. If your friends and family come, they vote for you, it's $1 per ticket. And then the funds will go to all the clubs in the school. And each candidate represents a specific club. So like swim, NHS, baseball, anything like that, they're trying to raise money for their organization. And we have started rehearsals for that this past week. Cardets have choreographed a dance number for them to do, so they were rehearsing that today in the cafeteria. And it was, it was pretty silly, but they seemed to enjoy it. And any of y'all are invited, we would love to have you there. It is April 17th from 7:00 PM for about an hour and a half. We'd love to see you guys out there. I'm going to pass it over to Riley.
Good evening, Mr. Burton. Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox. Good evening, board members. I'm here to talk about the Jelly Bean Festival, which is coming up this Thursday. We're working alongside Mr. Newton, who's going to be helping us out with our trophies that we're passing out. My favorite board member. So I wasn't coerced, I wasn't coerced. So the Jelly Bean Festival is a celebration of our kids in the CBI programs across the district. So we've invited, of course, our Raytown South High School CBI program kids, but also our Raytown High School CBI program kids, including also our Life University graduates from CBI programs. So they're handpicked talents or they're picking their own talent that they would like to showcase to the rest of the group. It's happening in the middle of the school day, so Raytown High School will be bust over. And then, so the, each CBI kids gets a Stuko helper in their talent. So I know one contestant is rapping. And so we have a Stuko member helping them onstage rapping. Another one is dancing, so they have a choreographed dance together. What's another one? Another one is singing, so they'll be singing together. And it's just a great way to bring about unity within the school and, you know, literally just warm everyone's hearts. And that's April 11th. You guys, of course, are invited to come. It begins at it begins at nine, 9:00 AM. And then we have a barbecue planned in our courtyard and it's just, I'm really excited. It's going to be a fun day. And then prom, so I am the head of a prom committee for our council. And so we have our Spirit Weeks planned, or excuse me, missed this. So our Night on the Bayou Prom 2024 is the theme. So we have our Spirit Weeks planned. We have our Assembly Script in the works. And then, most importantly, over spring break, quite a few representatives went over to the Diamond Club at Kauffman Stadium, which is the venue, to get a better view of the new area. And I think that was super, what's the word? Proactive in the planning process of prom. So what that does is it allows us to decorate better with that better view, like the DJ booth placement and stuff like that. And then also rebuild rapport with a host that we hope to use in the future as well. So it's always important to have that contact. Tickets are on sale now in school. I know kids are very excited. They're like, I'll be back when I get my money. I said, good, good, we'll be here. And then, so that's going to be April 27th at Kauffman Stadium in the Diamond Club. Very excited. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Burton. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Martin Knox.
Next we have presentations and recognitions.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. Our May ray of hope honoree is Erin Seals, a senior at Raytown High School. And I asked her to join me up here today because she has some show and tell that she can display while we talk. Erin is being recognized for her work related to the Education Exploration Passion Project at Herndon. For her passion project, Erin chose to create a diversity, equity and inclusion kit, toolkit, providing diverse resources for K through eight teachers and families here in the Raytown community. Erin presented her toolkit at the Cultural Competency Committee meeting where she serves as a student representative, receiving very high marks from her teacher. In addition to her work on the Cultural Competency Committee, Erin also serves as president of the RHS Black Student Union, received first place in the Children's Pre-K Spanish Division at the Educators Rising Competition and will now compete nationally in June in Washington DC. She was awarded the Highly Competitive $50,000 Great Jobs KC Scholarship. She is a published author and probably one of my favorite things about her is that she is the recipient of our district's Grow Your Own Scholarship Program. Okay, wow. Mom and dad come up to help. Erin's Educational Exploration Instructor, Kristen Drummond, shared the following. Erin is such a vibrant and passionate student. She has worked extremely hard on this project. I am proud of Erin's dedication, work ethic, and most importantly, her willingness to share this important passion project with the school community. Erin, we are proud of you and want to recognize you.
Well, that's it for tonight, y'all.
Think we just need some usuals, just pass tissue.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our public comment period. At each regular meeting, a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes will be provided for district residents and employees to address the Board of Education on matters placed on the agenda for consideration. Names, addresses and agenda items that the speakers intend to address shall be requested. Five minutes will be allotted to each person, except in the instances where six or more persons have indicated a desire to speak, in which case remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance. Thus allowing a maximum number of participants to speak in allotted time period. Speakers will not be permitted to participate in gossip, make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Tonight, we have two people that have chosen to speak to us. The first one is Marie Tracy. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Marie Tracy. I've been in Raytown for 10 years, teaching for 15 years. This is my first year teaching at South High. I was at Northwood previous to that. And I've been getting a new question from students this year, ever since like February. Anytime I like have to make an announcement or say, hey, I need to tell y'all something. Are you leaving? Are you going to a new school? Are you leaving? And the kids panic every time. And I mean, a lot of the teachers are leaving. We all know this. And while I do support an individual's right to do what's best for them and their family, of course, always, as a collective, it's really hard. And people leave for a lot of reasons. It's complicated. I know you all are having those conversations. It's pay, it's culture, climate, it's both of those things working together. It's individual, but it's collective too. And we are really lucky to have Ray Team here in this district that looks at all of this data from all of our employees and makes recommendations on what's going to make a difference for people. And so I'm speaking tonight to ask you to support those Ray Team recommendations for our children. Our children benefit from consistency, from having their teachers who stay, from not being panicked thinking their favorite teachers are going to leave. They benefit emotionally and they benefit academically. Me, being an experienced teacher who's in a new position this year, I haven't been at 100% every day. It took me some time to find my footing. I've learned a lot. I'm going to do a lot better next year. But kids who have a new teacher or even an experienced teacher in a new position every year are not going to be as strong academically as our kids who have those really established expert teachers. And so retaining our great teachers is what's best for our children. I know that matters to all of you. I know it matters to all of us. And I appreciate whatever you all are able to do to show that that is what Raytown wants. And also, I just want to say I appreciate all of you and your consistency on the board. A lot of times we are making this decision right after we've got new people on. No shade to that, you were all new ones too. But it's really nice this year to know that all of you know this district, know our kids and are going to do what's best for them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aiden Bundy. I've been here at Raytown Quality Schools for the past four years. But before that, I was in Lincoln Public Schools up in Nebraska for three years. Three years I spent at South Middle and this last year, when I spent at Ray High, so South, I mean, Raytown South Middle, Raytown South High, so South Side represent. When I returned to the metro, I specifically looked at Raytown for being my top pick of school districts to return to. At the end of my third year, I decided to go and leave South High and follow my middle schoolers up to the high school. And I was not the only teacher that left that year. There was a little over 20 of us. And I would like to say that they stayed within the district, but a lot of them did not. And our school district suffered tragically because of that. Many of those teachers put in their letters of resignation as to why they were leaving. And I feel like their voices were not unheard. This current school year, the same troubles persisted and we had lost over a dozen more. Even with feeling unheard and the loss of an amazing faculty team, I started the school year willing to put my all. Even with feeling unheard and the loss of an amazing faculty team, I started the school year willing to put my all. I've been a part of writing the curriculum for freshman seminar. I completely recreated the graphics design curriculum at South High. I've participated in school field trips to other districts to gain inspiration and more. But the biggest badge of honor that I get to hold is that my students know, remind me, and thank me for caring about them and their future. And this is why I come with this concern. In the world we live in today, I can safely say a good chunk of our problems come from the people establishing the rules and the people enforcing the rules are not completely lined up. Raytown, I feel like sometimes can not be exempt of this. Teachers have spoken several times through our union and yet our concerns still go unaddressed. We've sent surveys and voiced our concerns, but change that we need has not been met sometimes. When I started this school year, I was safely able to, or when I started this school district, I was safely able to manage my finances at ease. And now I'm in the same housing as I was at the beginning as a single parent of one, and I have to have two roommates and DoorDash in order to make ends meet. I can't have benefits for my son through the school district because it would literally take half of my paycheck every month if I did that. I did a life lesson assignment in my advisory class about bills and budgeting. And based off of Chase Bank's budgeting strategy, I would not be able to afford one of our cheapest apartment complexes here in Raytown. Why am I saying this? This time of the year, our district is all racing letters of resignation coming in. And I know many teachers, myself included, are looking at what the raise is going to be next year to see if staying in Raytown is going to be manageable for us. These past few years with the amazing faculty we've lost is heartbreaking, not because I've lost good coworkers, but our kids have lost some amazing role models. And I need our students to know it's not their fault. We need to retain our faculty, and this is one of many steps that need to occur for that to happen. Teachers need to be held highly because they are the voice of our students' needs. And sadly, when we lose staff, sometimes replacements are always not a step up. We, as a district, owe it to our students to provide them a better education than we had because that is what our purpose is, right? We want our kids to have a better life than what we had. And it starts by taking care of our students' support. This is by making sure our teachers are heard, put in places where decisions are being made, and also paid their worth. I understand that this board only has so much control. And I recognize this and I appreciate every single thing that you guys do because I know you guys are stuck between a rock and hard spot because you're trying to advocate for your employees while also trying to appease our state government. That's why I urge you to heavily weigh in on how next year's pay raise will affect our faculty members' numbers and our students' education. Because teachers, we are not as easily replaceable as people would like to believe. Thank you.
That's the end of our public comment period. We will now go to board committee reports. Start with the finance committee.
Finance committee met this evening and no major issues. The good news is that our, our fund balances are doing well and we should end the year in very good shape, better than expected shape as far as our fund balances go. We're looking at, at doing some things to get to spend the last of our nineteen budget, our bond funds. So we're looking at that and some projects might be coming along in the future on, on that, but everything going well.
Right. Thank you, Rick. Next, we have the Policy Review Committee.
Policy Committee will be meeting after this meeting, so we don't have any minutes for tonight, but we will for next month.
The Capital Improvement Committee, it's not met, and we'll meet prior to the next meeting. Community Engagement Committee.
Community Engagement Committee will be prior to the next quarter.
Curriculum Professional Development Committee. All right. Safety Committee.
Safety Committee met three thirteen last year. Mr. President, I'm going to move the board to approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, Safety Task Force Committee meeting.
There a second?
We didn't meet on three thirteen. Is there a second? Oh.
Second.
Sorry. All right, go ahead. Yeah, we didn't meet on three thirteen and we had a, a really good turnout, had stakeholders of the community along with staff to discuss the purpose of the committee, discuss the avalanche around the nation. Reference a few articles to kind of give us framework of the reason for the committee and what we want to do going forward to improve our own school district. We also reviewed and discussed our current discipline policies and procedures. And we'll meet again next month, I think four twenty four, but we will put that information out beforehand.
Couple weeks. And Citizens Advisory Committee update?
We have not met since the last board meeting, but we have a meeting scheduled for May, and I'll have a report after that.
All right. That's it for the Board Committee Reports. Let's take a vote. Next, we have the Raytown Educational Fund Report.
I'm reporting for the Raytown Educational Foundation's meeting highlights for January and March twenty twenty four. Walter A. and Charlotte Soul Family Foundation. The ref applied for its annual grant from the Soul Family Foundation. Rather than the usual grant of $6,000 for a scholarship, the Soul Family Foundation awarded ref a grant in the amount of $48,000. Thirty thousand is for ref's teaching and learning grant for twenty twenty four, twenty five. And eighteen thousand is for ref's student recognition program. Scholarships, second semester marks scholarship season for ref. Dual credit tuition assistance scholarships. The foundation, in partnership with the Raytown Retired School Personnel, provides financial assistance to students enrolled in high school dual credit classes. The scholarship pays one-third of the student's total tuition cost. Through the generosity of seven donors, including the Soul Family Foundation, this year, ref and the retired school personnel will be able to provide forty-seven students with scholarships that will provide one-half of the school's total, students' total tuition instead of one-third. Graduating Senior Scholarships. The foundation has over forty graduating senior scholarships. Eighty-seven students submitted applications. Upon a common, using a common application form, students may apply for multiple scholarships, thus essentially creating six hundred and ninety-five applications. The foundation has thirty selection committees and eighty-three readers to make it fair. All right? Scholarship recipients are announced at each high school's, uh, school awards. Student recognition. Ref holds celebration events to recognize high school students each quarter. Each quarter has a different area of recognition. In the second quarter, the criteria is a three point oh, uh, uh, three point oh above GPA for the first semester. Third quarter criteria is you must have no disciplinary, disciplinary referrals during that quarter. The breakdown for these students is Raytown High School. The second quarter eligible students was four hundred and eighty-six students, which is thirty-six percent of the total student enrollment. Third quarter eligible students was nine hundred and ninety students, which is seventy-three percent of the total student enrollment. Raytown South School, second quarter, three hundred and sixty students, which is thirty percent of the total student enrollment. Third quarter eligible students was seven hundred and forty-five students, which is sixty-two percent of the total student enrollment. Lastly, the sender experience. Registration is now open for refs fund rate with Herndon Career Center's Culinary Art Institute on Friday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Seating is limited, seventy to seventy. Registered through ref's website under the event tab. That's my report.
Thank you so much for your report. Next, we have the Oaths of Office for myself and Mr. Newton III.
If you both raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And then I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director and in coordination C two school district.
And I will faithfully and partially discharge the duties of the school director in and for the Raytown C two school district.
County of Jackson, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability according to law.
County of Jackson, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability according to law.
So at this time, is there a motion for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Board President? Is there a motion? Miss, Miss Salisbury?
I'm moved that we vote for Mr. Alonzo Burton as president.
Is is there a second from Mr. Watson? Are there any other nominations? Upon no further submissions, the motion to cease nominations. Is there a motion to cease nominations? Miss Salisbury? And there's a second. I heard the voice. Was that you, Mr. Watson? Oh, Mr. Newton the third. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations to you, Mr. Burton, as being nominated as the Board Chair for Raytown Quality Schools.
Yeah, y'all don't be so excited.
Mr. President, I move that the board let Mr. Noti Newton first.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any other nominations?
President, I'm moving that the board nominate Mr. Michael Watson as for Vice President.
Is there a second? I second. Is there any other nominations? And is there a motion to cease nominations?
Mr. President, I motion to cease nominations.
Motion made and seconded to cease nominations. Our first nomination was Mr. Newton. All those in favor of Mr. Newton as Vice President? Ms. Johnston will go through the roll.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Chaffey-Baird?
Yes.
Dr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Salisbury?
No.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
No. Motion passes. All right. The Vice Yeah, okay. I mean, I believe. The, uh, the Vice President, new Vice President for the twenty-four twenty two thousand twenty-four Board Vice Presidents, Mr. Noti Newton. Next, we'll have the appointment of a delegate and alternate to attend the Missouri School Board Association Twenty Twenty Four Summer Summit. That was, um, the summer summit. I, uh, I appoint myself and, uh, asked Mr. Newton to go on June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Me and delegate and alternate. Next, we'll have the insurance renewal, health, dental, and vision.
Mr. President, I move to accept the health, dental, vision, and life insurance as presented.
There any discussion? Take a vote. Next one is the Benefits Direct Renewal Agreement. Your motion.
Mr. President, we have a agreement with the N I N B L Group Benefits Consulting Services, the God that has.
Motion made and seconded. Let's take a vote. Next, we have the ARSEC Parking Lot Upgrades.
Mr. President.
Move the board approve asphaltic solutions for the work at our sec parking lot with a base price of ninety thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and overall price not to exceed ninety-nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars thirty and thirty cents.
Motion made and seconded.
I have just question. Guys. So tell me what's all gonna be done there?
Good evening, um, what's gonna be does the parking lots that end to life, so there's a bunch of cracks and we can't repair it, so they'll go through primer mill and take the down by the curb and then do a two inch, a two inch overlay, excuse me, over the top of everything, uh, then restripe it's where it looks like a new parking lot.
I was just curious, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars, so I just wanted to know.
Absolutely.
Motion passes. Epoxy wall, floor covering, uh, floor coatings removal and replacement at Raytown South Middle.
Mister President. Move board approved by Captain the epoxy work at Raytown South Middle School in amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars total not to exceed one hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety dollars and eighty cents.
I will talk about that one for just a second, that was done in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, uh, there's some pictures that show existing conditions on there, uh, it was before there was a UV, um, repellent, be able to put in the epoxy coatings, uh, the, the walls, if you guys have been there, look extremely yellow and tarnished, uh, and that's the reason for the referral.
Mister President. So should last, what's gonna make it last longer this time?
So they, they've come up with, is you like anything new with technology is thing to get advanced, uh, that was when they first started doing it, they didn't have a UV protectant to be able to put in, didn't know that was an issue. Um, it's not just lights from outside, it's actually LED lights as well, so if you look, uh, really anywhere in the building, you'll see really yellow stripes, uh, it looks dirty, it's not dirty. Um, it's just the, the coloring of it, and so the answer to your question, Mister Moore, is there's a, there's a UV protectant that's now applied with epoxy as the final coating.
You.
Next we have the, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendments.
Mister President. I move the board approve the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Mister President. We did discuss these at finance committee, I didn't mention it earlier, but these just have to do with some adjustments made, uh, required because of the timing of certain bond payments. Think I might freaking say it that way.
You don't want more information?
No.
Yes.
No. Well, we don't, well, we're fired. Mister Newton. Next we have the student device card purchase.
Moved at the board, Mister President, I moved at the board award the twenty twenty-four student device card bid of the by casting facility for the students cards for a total purchase price of thirty-one thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars.
Right.
Mister President, Mister Vice President, Dr. Martin Knox and board. I wanted to talk just a minute about this move because this is going to represent a change in our one-to-one device policy at the middle school level. Uh, we're doing this because, uh, we're, we're simply losing too much instructional time with either lost, broken, or devices not coming into the classroom. And so like I said, this is temporary, we're gonna still ensure that we have enough devices for AMI days so that if we do have that, we'll still send them home. But what we're trying to do is just maintain it to where the devices work in the classroom. And so I just wanted to be very transparent because, well, I think this is a very good move, short term, long term, we want to get back to where those devices go home with kids.
Motion passes. Next we have purchase of textbooks, French one and two, Spanish one and two, and Spanish for heritage speakers.
President, I move that the board of education approve the purchase of these textbooks.
Motion made and seconded. Doctor Brennan.
Good evening, President Burton.
Good evening.
As President Newton, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the recommendation.
We have none, thank you.
Can't speak French or Spanish. Well, I lied, they can't speak it.
Doctor Douglas, Bobby. Twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, tier one instruction, professional learning. There are motions.
President, move the board's case including Marzano Associates purchase agreement for fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars attached to fifty-two.
Second.
Doctor Griner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy to entertain any questions the board might have.
How does this, uh, Mister President? How does this fit in with the, uh, I think we have two agreements that talk about tier one instruction, or maybe it's one agreement that talks about tier one instruction for, it may have been for precase, so I may be a little bit confused, but is this similar to that, and so?
So last month, the board approved tier one SEL curriculum, everyday speech. So yeah, it's connected in that is what, it's what all of our students will receive instruction. The first curriculum, everyday speech was around social emotional learning, uh, skills. And then we'll also be providing training for staff around tier one academic curriculum and content strategies. So they're, they're, uh, together, but, but as separate.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. Next we have the Ray Team twenty-four, twenty-five school year salary recommendations.
Sorry, we're improv-ing here, uh, good evening, uh, Mister President, members of the board, uh, Dr. Martin Knox, um, community. Um, I do want to publicly thank Ray Team, uh, and the members for all their work, uh, throughout this year, the work of Ray Team starts, um, in August and September, they meet monthly. No, um, quality of work-life issue is too small, the quality of work-life issue is too large for them to tackle. Um, Ray Team is made up of representatives from every, um, employee stratification from across our learning community, and so when they come together, it truly is the voice, um, of our learning community. I do want to publicly thank them for their work, uh, and those committee members that worked so hard this year on those recommendations and proposals, um, are Suzie Morgan, Dennis Hessel, Megan Willett, Mary Regan, Tenisha Love, Dr. Julie Schmidley, Melissa Tanner, Jamison Link, Amy Meyer, Karen Coin, Ashley Jones, and Kevin Prosser. Um, again, um, I'm fortunate enough to be able to facilitate that group, and there's one thing that is apparent, uh, that the heart of these folks is with Ray Town and in the work that they do regardless of what role they play. Um, and I know that I am, um, inspired, uh, by getting to hear, um, their commitment to our kids and our community. And so again, wanted to publicly thank them before, uh, they move forward with their presentation. Uh, tonight presenting, we've got, uh, Mary Regan and Suzie Morgan.
All right, good evening, board president, Mister Vice President, Dr. Martin Knox, and school board.
Good evening.
All right, so I am, like you said, Mary Regan, um, this is Suzie Morgan, she represents library and media specialist, um, you saw the nice little list, we'll go over that in a second, so. Um, first up, I just want to review our mission, Ray Team is a collaborative team working together towards consensus to improve the quality of the workplace and recommend an affordable and competitive compensation package for all employees of the Raytown School District. Um, Mister, how, Dr. Calcara stole my thunder here, but I was gonna have anybody who's on Ray Team just give a little wave because there's quite a few of us here. Um, like he said, we represent, um, two of the teacher unions and we also represent various departments of the school district, so we tried to, we very purposely try to make sure that we, um, have everybody on our team so that we are making recommendations for all of our staff. Um, our process is we meet monthly, um, retail, Ray Team, oh yeah, you can go to the next one, oh no, yep, there we are. Um, Ray Team meets monthly, um, as Ray Team members, we relay feedback and concerns to the Ray Team, and then we also bring information back to our, um, respective departments and buildings. Uh, the big chunk of what we do revolves around the annual survey, we just develop and distribute an annual survey to all of our employees that guides the, and this guides our agenda based on the results. Um, we then, uh, do survey analysis, so we analyze all the data, this year we had seven hundred and ten responses and this guides, um, our decision-making, planning and recommendations that we are bringing to you today. We also receive regular updates from the finance department, Ms. Jackie Vernon, and, uh, HR departments, Dr. Calcare, obviously, um, to stay informed about the current bu- budget and staffing, uh, needs in our district. We also invite district leaders to our meetings to discuss concerns and suggestion, um, so we have a lot of open and good positive feedback with district leaders. And all of these, uh, all of this process guides us to our annual board recommendations. Do you want to go over the survey? She's here for moral support. Um, so our survey this year was ten questions, uh, it was two short answer and we received seven hundred and ten responses. Question seven is really what we'll focus on and, uh, talk about today, it was, the question was to rank items from most to least important. Um, number one was salary, which we've seen year after year, number two is benefits, which you just adopted a package, and we thank you for that. Um, and then number three is culture, climate and staff morale. For this presentation, we're focusing, um, just on salary recommendations. So our recommendations are one step to every salary schedule, a three point six increase to the base, which is a one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollar increase to our base. Um, we were very purposeful about this number because it would bring our starting step one, our base salary to forty-two thousand and four dollars. Um, our current base salary is forty thousand five hundred and forty-five, so that is our step one when you get hired into Raytown. Um, the third is two years of step restoration for the school years two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And this would be for employees with, who have maintained continuous employment in the school district and who have not moved salary schedules, so if you were a teacher and you've moved to principal, this would not apply to you. Um, if, it, I know we get a lot of questions about step restoration, what this would do is place previously frozen employees, um, on a more accurate step. Um, the estimated cost per, um, fi- our last finance update was approximately four hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars to complete the two years of step restoration. Um, lastly, we just want to acknowledge the board and appreciate you, we know that, um, your efforts to renew staff morale and enhance community pride. We acknowledge and appreciate your efforts to renew staff morale and enhance community pride in our school district. Um, we also understand and appreciate the difficult decisions the board faces and the time required for collaboration. We also, um, have aligned our objectives with the Board of Education's goals to attract and retain quality staff. And we also are dedicated to advocating for competitive salaries and benefits for all of our district employees. Do you want to add anything? Okay, so that's it.
Mister President, Mister President.
Yes.
I move the board to accept the Ray Team proposal to add one step to every salary schedule, three point six increase to the base and a two-step restoration for school year two thousand ten, eleven and eleven to twelve.
Motion made and seconded.
Mister President. So I'll having made that motion, I'll say many of you know that I've been against step restoration for a long time, been open and honest with you about that. And in general, I still believe that because the whole reason for doing that, we, we had a reason for doing that at that time. But this climate has changed, we're in a different situation now and retention is, is critical. Plus you guys have just worn me down. No, not really, but we're, we're in a different situation now and we're in, in a much heightened competition with surrounding districts who are doing this and more. And even the three point six percent of the base will bring us to forty-two, but it's not even gonna keep us at the middle of the pack where we've been wanting to be, it's, we're, we're still gonna drop drop down quite a bit on our, in that, in that level, closer to the bottom. Uh, so we need to do at this, at the very least, in my opinion.
I have a question, Mister President. Although you all are not discussing the issue of climate. But I'm curious about, I mean, so you get the raise that you're requesting and the, um, retention. What is, what do you, I mean, what do you present to the district because that doesn't necessarily mean that an individual is gonna stay in the district because you give them these two things that they're requesting, I mean, especially the, uh, the retention. What, I mean, how are you, if I, if we got a culture issue, if we got a climate issue, how is that resolved by the increase? And I'm not against anything, I'm just asking questions.
So I don't think it's going to resolve the issue, but I can say that it will speak to a feeling of appreciation by those employees who have been here that long. We have lost a lot of employees and when I have spoken to them or spoken to people who they know, um, those lost steps were one of the main reasons that they left. Um, incorporate with other issues, but that, that, this issue keeps coming up in our Ray Team survey. And one of the things that we strive to do is to take the results from our survey and bring them to the board. And this is one of those major things that keeps coming up year after year, so as a Ray Team, we have promised the employees to bring to you what comes up in the survey, and this is it. This, I think for people who have had those frozen steps, it will feel really good, even if the number itself isn't as big as some of the surrounding districts, it will feel good to them that they're being recognized for staying in Ray Town, um, and being committed to the district that they've been in for, you know, fourteen, fourteen years or more.
And I'll just add to, um, this is just kind of part one of what we're doing, um, for addressing the cultural, um, the concern number three on there, uh, we are continuing to meet, so we're not done meeting after this meeting, we have another meeting on Thursday, um, we, we're We, where, where we will really start to look, not start to, but continue to look at non-salary concerns that came up on the survey. In addition, we've also met ongoing with, like I was saying, the culture, the curriculum team has come to our meetings. Finance has come to our meetings a lot. So there's a lot that we're also doing, but we're just focusing on salary for today.
What time is that? A meeting on Thursday?
Eight thirty in this room.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think to be, I think it's fair that we as the board understand what is the culture, what is the climate, what's the staff morale? I think that's the part that should have been incorporated in this and sharing with us to let us know what's actually going on. Because obviously there's something going on that, that we eliminate one issue and then we got these other issues that are there. We're taking care of the benefit part and, and, and we're looking at the salary. But I think this is a big issue. If we got a cultural, climate, staff morale issue, I think that is important that it be brought to the board, that the board know about this. It's not fair to us to put a Band-Aid on something and it's going to burst out later on. So if there's something going on in the district that we need to be aware of, I think it's responsibility of Ray Team to bring it to us.
I, I'd like to, I agree with what Ms. Bobby's saying. The, one of the considerations, I'll give you a second. One of the, as we consider the top three things that you mentioned as far as the recommendations are concerned, definitely like to look at that as a whole. Because I too have been against the step restoration, but I, I'm open to understanding what, what it is you're talking about. And I know the climate has changed in, in the, as far as education is concerned. And I would, I would move that we table this motion to the May meeting because this is something we really need to consider, digest. And, and I think we should come to that meeting as many, as, as, as many of us that can. I think that's something that we should do.
Is there a motion?
I'm next, a motion. A table, a motion to table.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yep.
I believe we have to, to vote on the salary issue this evening because the contracts have to be issued and, and has to be done prior to the next meeting.
Every, every time I've been, every year I've been on the board, we voted the next meeting after the recommendation was made.
No, no, we always vote this, at this meeting.
We did that last year.
No, we voted at this meeting.
Well, I must have heard it, I must have heard it early.
Mr. Moore. Of course, I'm proceeding. He, I think, I think deals with the markets. I don't want to enter the gray area. And I totally agree with this. What's being said here. I don't want to make absolute promises. I totally understand as long as this is about that in a sense. But what I, I do, I can't make this because I'm already convinced each other's way of thinking. And I will be there supporting. I'm going to the right side.
Hey, Mr. Newt.
So, but what I, what I am going to say is, I can't.
I'll make a motion to postpone this to our next board meeting. Postpone this motion. Is there a second?
Let me ask a question.
Yep.
Mr. Newton was obviously trying to say something in reference to culture, competency.
Yeah, Mr. Moore wants to.
But here, let me explain, let me explain. Here's what I'm saying before we make the decision is that if there's information out there, it is not fair to ask us to make a decision. And there's stuff going on in the district that we are not aware of. I think if you bring it to us, if you list it as an item from your survey, that information should be shared with the board, simple as that. I don't think it's fair that you ask of us to make a decision and there's stuff going on. I just think that we need to know that stuff to make a better decision. It's not going to change nothing necessarily, but it does, and it does enhance our understanding. Does that make sense to you? That we have a clear understanding of what it is that's going on in the district? Because we don't want, we don't want teachers to come in, stay a year or two, and then they're gone because there's some underlying situations going on in the district that the board is not aware of.
And we have been addressing this situation in that regard. Because every year, I mean, when we consider these, we, I think last year may be in the first year that we didn't just totally align ourselves with the Ray Team. But at the same time, each year, I believe would be the highest, last two years are the highest increase in the history of the district. And so we, that's something, I just, the time to consider it. I'm not against anything that's been recommended, but I do agree with the Ms. Salisbury that I want to hear, I want to hear the third piece. I want to hear that part.
Mr. President.
Kicking it.
Mr. President, I'd also like to add this as well. I think with Mr. Moore stating that we're in a better financial position, I think we have to look at it as a whole, as well as understanding that we're in a better financial position now. And we have to also look for the future, considering where we'll be in our reserves. That it's just a one-year outlook opportunity. I'm not against any of the recommendations at all. I honestly totally believe in them. But I agree with President Burton giving us the opportunity to understand all three. But at the same time, understanding that our position as stewards of the district is to not only look at the now, but look at the future. To understand where we'll be, where this will put us. I see the estimated total cost financed to the district. And so I think for us, giving us the opportunity to actually have that discussion, I think would be better than just making a decision tonight.
And just an additional to that, we always have had the opportunity to look at the existing budget, the effect of the dollar amount on the budget. And I, I think this has been a shotgun situation, not on the part of the teacher's presentation, but on the part of the board rushing, wanting to go forward in this. I think it is, it is the responsibility, it's our judiciary responsibility to make sure that we look at what's existing and what effect it has upon the future. And I think that we should have that liberty to make that decision with soundness of mind.
With that being said, is there a second?
I second it.
Mr. President. I would just, just add one other thing or a couple of things. I don't feel, I was rushing into this, making this motion because this is a standard procedure that we've always done at this meeting after the Ray Team presentation. Another thing that will, will seriously affect us if we wait till May is will seriously affect Dr. Calcare's hiring ability because he will not be able to tell prospective teachers and staff what their salary is going to be when we're in this very, very competitive market right now. And, and we risk, by waiting another month, leave this uncertainty with our current staff who were already so many looking at moving elsewhere. The reason, one of the big reasons for the, the step restoration is because Lee Summit did. I don't like to copy what Lee Summit did. I hate that we're always competing with them, but they've done step restoration. And it really, and they've actually gone beyond that because they're recognizing years of service in, in ways that we can't afford to do right now. But if we don't at least keep up with them and step restoration, we're putting ourselves even further behind. And by waiting to May to make this decision, and, and again, we are even looking at this year's finances and next year's, we are in good position to do this right now.
I think we probably need to do what's best for Raytown in regards to where we are and who we are. Because we're never, never, ever going, as soon as we do this, it's going to be just like last year and the year before, and the year before. We stay in the middle of the pack, we raise up, and we get back down to the middle of the pack because we don't have the same resources as those other school districts do. And that's who we are.
All right.
And so we have to address the climate and the culture and the, and the, and we have to address all three things.
So.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? Just to get in the middle, does it have to wait? The discussion have to wait till the next board meeting?
No, it doesn't have to wait.
Because it can call a special meeting to, yeah, we can call a, we don't have to wait a, a full month for this.
We don't.
Yeah, we can call a special meeting to address the issue and get on with this financial vote.
I agree with that.
Mr. President, can I say one thing? I just want to say a simple message. So I don't feel like I'm rushing into anything. I supported that recommendation because people spent a lot of time and effort with the teachers, district building leadership, educating themselves when they came up with these steps. And so I know that we talk about retention being the new recruitment. We've mentioned all of these things. And so I do understand that there are three different things that have come up and that they're focusing on salary. I would just also like to say that part of culture and climate, I mean, that like the pay contributes also to the culture and the climate. So I'm just going to end this piece with, I supported this recommendation because we had a group of educated people along with our district leadership, building leadership on the team, and they've worked in tandem to come up with those recommendations. So I don't feel like that, that I was making a blind decision in supporting that.
Mr. President. I think that it is no one here saying that they are not supportive of the decision that has been brought to us by Ray Team.
Correct.
Hear me clearly. It is not about support. It is about if we have an issue in the district that we as the board member are not aware of, we need to be aware of it. That's simple. Ray Team should have brought additional information to us about if you're going to present it, you should have supported it. That's simply said. I am, there's nothing here, there's nothing here. Simply what is said is what I'm asking is that we be given clarity on what the cultural, climate, staff morale is going on in the district. So that the board is aware and that we can do something to address it, to change it, to help it.
I want to give Dr. Martin Knox an opportunity.
So thank you, Mr. Burton. And, and I think that you as a board are asking those challenging and tough questions. I think that I am one who keeps my thumb on the pulse in the district. And, and the things that I heard upon my arrival and the things that I continue to hear, many were here when I got here. But we also are dealing with the climate as a nation in the world of education when we're dealing with the challenges that come along with post-pandemic matters. We are teaching children in a different way in which we have traditionally been teaching them. So you're dealing with a lot of stressors that our teachers are dealing with. When I listen to the recommendations and the information from Ray Team or when I'm in schools and I'm talking to staff, you'll hear them talk about workload, you'll hear them talk about discipline, you'll hear them talk about all of those other factors. And many of them are also driven by the stressors of the cost of living. When we're looking at our rate of pay. I know that one of the first board meetings I attended prior to my stepping into this, and I've said this publicly, when I sat down and I heard that we were probably in financial crisis moving into my first year, I had a couple of options. I could have either told you all thank you, but no thank you, but instead I stepped in and I grabbed the bull by the horns so that we can continue to make shifts and adjustments to our budget. We talk on a regular basis about our budget and where we are, looking at the bottom line and looking at the bigger picture of where we are. And so while we're continuing to make strides, because I do believe not just our teachers, but our staff as a whole, whether it's bus drivers, cafeteria, when we look at our districts that are in the neighboring areas, they are increasing because as Mr. Burton stated, they're in a financial situation that's unlike ours. We have to look at Raytown. Our tax base, our revenue is totally different from those other jurisdictions. But I do believe we have made some strides, if you will, in terms of our finances by making sure we're monitoring our spending and how we're doing business. And we have shifted doing business the certain, in certain ways to make sure that we're able to contribute to the finances. We have had conversations about the recommendations that are being brought forward. But I again, wanted to make sure that Ray Team had the opportunity to present their recommendations and to let the board hear. So when we're talking about the things that are happening within the district, just being completely transparent, I've shared with you what I've heard and what I know. It's workload, it's teacher workload, it's student discipline, it's the expectations, and it's truly a part of the change process. Because we've been doing business just a little bit differently. Because as indicated earlier by Aiden, there are expectations that are placed upon school districts that are state-driven and they're federal-driven guidelines that we have to continue to maintain and to supers, to exceed. If not, we're going to be in a bigger problem. And so we have to make sure that one, we have quality people who are delivering content to our children, who are willing to change, who are willing to move forward in this work and to really want to be here in Raytown. If there are individuals who are leaving, they're leaving for multitude of reasoning, reasons, and pay is one of them. Every time I turn around, I hear one of my colleagues in a meeting talk about, yeah, we've increased this. But when I look at their tax base and their revenue and their student enrollment, their dollars look a little different from ours. So we're trying to keep pace with where we are and comparison to others. Because the one thing I don't want to do is to lose quality educators, quality leaders for our children because they deserve it. Will we ever be at the top? If I have my way, we will. But we will continue to move forward so that we can maintain, to continue to keep those who are here, who want to be here and who are driven by the need to see Raytown succeed. So I just wanted to put that piece on there because I'm sitting here and I hear about the recommendations and the, the concerns that are there and the prioritization. As a superintendent, I hear it, I see it, I know it. But we're continuing to make adjustments so that we can do what's best. And we're moving at a fast pace, there's no question. But we don't have time because with our children, we have one opportunity to get it right. And so, you know, while we have these recommendations here, one of the things we have to do as a district, we cannot wait. I agree with Ms., Ms., Dr. Douglas. We need to have a meeting if we're going to table it because we can't wait because people are making decisions now. Contracts are going out now, so we have to do something before we end up losing our quality individuals who are doing the work for our children. I just wanted to say that part.
So then the motion has been made and seconded to postpone the original motion to a specific time. I, I'm, I agree with you, Dr. Douglas, maybe we should look at scheduling a special meeting. A special meeting in order to make that determination. And so that's, that's the motion to postpone to a specific time. I guess we can amend that to say this meeting that you're having tomorrow, Thursday, we can meet as well as. No.
Point of order, Mr. President, could we just make a simple motion to table and then, then if that passes, then decide on a time for the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that. So the motion been made and seconded to table.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Newton.
Mister Newton. No. I'm trying to do, to make things. Dr. Douglas.
I want to be clear on what we're doing here, it's on.
To postpone.
To postpone and not till the next meeting, but.
Well, we gotta do that, we gotta. Do the next.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on. When is the next meeting?
He just said, don't make the next meeting till we agree to postpone it.
The motion is.
And you already voted.
Miss Salisbury.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Burton. So it's four, three. Hold on, two thirds is what I'm taking, I'm sorry, it is majority.
Yeah.
Motion passes to postpone it to special meeting.
So they're having their meetings Thursday?
They're having their meeting tomorrow.
Thursday.
Thursday, eight thirty. Uh, there. Is there a motion to uh for the special meeting date, time?
Mister President, I'll make a motion that we have a special meeting on Monday. April fifteenth. In order to go over the rating recommendations after a meeting on Thursday.
Second.
And you, you gotta, go ahead. Can't zoom. So motion has been made and seconded to have a meeting on. On Monday. Uh, during regular meeting time. Do a roll.
Yeah, next, next Monday, yeah.
Mister Moore. Mister Newton.
Yes.
Mister Johnson Barry, I s- I need to. I have to check my state.
I don't know, I'm not getting any wifi, I have meetings scheduled, I don't know. So, I don't, but that may be a note right now. I don't know.
Is that enough for right now? I don't know, can't get up my stuff with wifi. Dr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Salisbury.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
I would just like to say that Ray Team does not take our um salary recommendations too lightly. We look at our financial numbers every single meeting. We look at our projected numbers, what our projected fund balances will be for five years out. We look at historical numbers, we talk about the um taxes that are coming in, we talk about all of that. And when we make a recommendation on salary and anything financial. We have never recommended anything that we did not believe was financially feasible for the district that could be supported. We will never make a financial recommendation that we think will put the district in financial harm. We are responsible that way, it has never happened and it's never going to happen. I think that putting the vote. Aside for tonight is going to. Cause people who are on the fence about whether or not to stay in Ray Team to jump over that fence and seriously look at other places. I know teachers who are leaving Ray Town to make less money because they want to be in a different district. I think that part of the cultural response um or feeling is. Per the surveys that we've given for mo- every year are step restoration and honestly jeans. Those are the two things that keep coming up and we have brought those issues repeatedly to the board. So from Ray Team, that's what we have. We decided to make our salary recommendations for this April meeting so that we could have um. That information to go out early to staff. We are meeting on um Thursday, we will make another pre- presentation in May. For all of the other things that need to come to the board, that's not salary. But that's why we made this recommendation for today. You know, I've been on Ray Team um the longest of any of the members and. It is very frustrating on my end to put all of the work and time into making. Actually the compromise for the recommendation that we came because I wanted more. I wanted to bring the board more, but when we looked at the numbers. We wanted to be responsible, so we agreed on this and to have. To hear, no, we're not going to make a decision tonight, it's very disheartening to me and many other people.
I just want to. I, I just want to reiterate what um Suzie's saying, that we were not, we're not, our intention was never to hide anything on the climate, on the climate end. Um, you guys have seen the climate survey, what we see on the Ray Team results are not very different from that. You've been getting updates from teachers, you just heard from some teachers tonight. Um, we're, like I said, we're not hiding anything, that salary and step restoration. Is so wildly important to teachers that it deserved its own presentation. We thought anything else would be a bit distracting and we've spent so much time working on these recommendations, which is why we were waiting to present. Anything else, because this is just incredibly important and I um. I'm getting emotional because this, it really concerns me that we're waiting um. From my own personal research, nine districts around us have already made decisions and. We need to act with urgency if we want to retain our staff.
As you can tell, the board is uh. Is uh supportive of, I don't want you to, as Ms. Bobby was saying, misunderstand that um. We're against any of the recommendations, but just as you've been diligent. In your decision making and in your presentation and the time that you've been given. I want to have that same consideration and I don't, and I, and I have been. Uh, paying attention and I have been doing those things, but I think as a board, we rarely get to, we rarely get to come together. And communicate and really go through the process um of. Of making these very serious decisions. Cause I, I appreciate everything Ray Team does, I appreciate the time you've spent, I, I, I value it. Um, I'm speaking personally. But uh, because I think that uh us waiting till Monday is not a, it shouldn't be, I don't want you to take it as an indication. That it might be like there's some decision or some hesitancy of. There's some decision or. That's already been made or some postponement, but it's a very serious situation that we've all been elected. To make sure that in our community that we do, we make the same, we do the same diligence that you have done. And I don't think making a decision that night that we have all done it. Mister Newton.
Mister Brett. Mister Brett, I would just, just ask before we move on. For one person who voted in ju- in the majority of the table to make a motion to reconsider. I don't know if that will happen, but I would just urge one person to make a motion to reconsider. The motion table. Because I reiterate, this is no different than we've done for nineteen years that I've been on this board. And, and if board is not prepared, that is not their fault, and this is the way we've always done it every year. That's just ridiculous.
Mister President, and Mister Moore, just like the meetings you missed before. And you didn't ask that you had be there for those meetings, it's kind of the same being now that you're different, you're asking. That it not happens since you won't be able to attend those meetings, but previously you didn't ask that. So all we're asking is for the opportunity to go over this as a board, to speak in one accord. It's not saying we don't appreciate what they're saying, the work that they did. But our responsibility as elected officials is to be steward and fiduciary responsible for the district.
I think that's the whole message, because I, I think what's sending, the message is being sent to the, to the staff now is that this board doesn't care and all of that. That's the father's thing. It's the father's thing, it is, it is, it is fairness, just the fairness.
Please see quarter.
Can we, please see quarter, thank you.
Order please.
Fairness that you have shared with us and your due diligence, you should allow us that same thing. No one, like this board has said no to what you have proposed. And I want that stress because I think somebody might be trying to send you a different message that we're not supportive of that. And that's the father's thing from the truth. I tell you right now from the bottom of my heart, that is not true, but it is fair. It is incumbent upon us to do our due diligence to say when we stand, we stand firmly in our agreement. Don't deny us that. Because if we are any, if we are pushed here and there, then we're worthless to you. You would want us to be sure of what we do, not saying we're denying you, but give us that privilege. And it's only set, what, what's today is Monday, it's seven days from today, that's all.
Correct me if I'm wrong, has the Ray Team survey previously been shared with you all?
Yes.
So you've had the same information that we've had all year?
The Ray Team recommendation, as customary, as you can see in our agenda today. That presentations are made and decisions are made today, presentations were made last month, decisions were made this month. Even if it's just to get a time to digest even more, no recommendations were made, we saw the same, we, yeah, we saw the, we saw those surveys. Just like you did, and you made a recommendation, we waited for your recommendation. And now we want to take seven days to consider what you've have recommended.
May I ask when this um was shared with you all?
Have a date of when that.
I mean, it was made public at least a week ago. I can go to the, I mean, and I'm, I am saying that even waiting.
It's more about the recommendations that you've made today, not about the survey.
No, this recommendation was made on, it's attached to the agenda at least a week ago.
Recommendation that you sit here today.
But that has.
Saying is that we want a seven day time period to reconsider those recommendations, just like it's customary. I'm going to end, I'm going to end of this discussion, I think, if we don't get a second on that motion, but. Just like it's customary for us, we get the agendas, we, we read the agendas. They make the presentations to us and we, we vote on those the following month. That's what we do every month, every month. Alright. You have a second for the reconsider. Rick made a motion to.
I can't make a motion, someone who voted in favor of the motion would have to.
Sorry. Alright, well. So we have uh agreed to meet Monday. At uh same times, we, five thirty, five thirty Monday. Special meeting. Alright, we'll move to consent agenda. I need a motion.
I moved that the board is. Approved the April, I consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. For vote, I'd like to take time to read the donations. We have a donation of sixteen twenty dollar gift cards totaling three hundred twenty dollars from Applebee's to Southwood Elementary. We have a donation of two hundred dollars to the district from DJ's Hangout. We have a donation of mint candy for testing totaling a hundred sixty-five dollars from Ivanhoe United Church of Price to Robinson Elementary School. We have a donation of rugs worth a hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cent from Lowe's store number twenty-nine forty-three to Spring Valley Elementary. We have a donation of art supplies for children for the art show raffle prizes worth a hundred forty dollars. From Blick Art Materials to Robinson Elementary School. We have a donation of socks worth five dollars from Saint Matthew's Episcopal. Uh, to Robinson Elementary, we have a donation of six thousand mental health matters. Youth cards worth four hundred twenty dollars from Ray Town Rotary to Ray Town School District. We have a donation of meals for parent teacher conferences worth three hundred dollars from Skyline Church to Southwood Elementary School. We have a donation of lunches for parent teacher conferences and pizza for students worth a thousand dollars. From Skyline Church to Spring Valley Elementary School. We have a donation of Sonic gift carts. For student and staff attendance worth a hundred fifty dollars from Skyline Church to Spring Valley Elementary School. We have a donation of Thanksgiving and Christmas family dinners, scooters for attendance, books, hats and gloves. Worth eleven hundred dollars from Skyline Church to Spring Valley Elementary School. Want to thank everyone uh that has contributed to our schools and for their donations and their support and it's greatly appreciated. And take a vote. Your motion to adjourn.
I think I'm moved that the board. If you want the regular Board of Education meeting at eight thirty-two P M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.